It's 10 o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order if you would stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome, everyone. Looks like everyone is here. Clerk Turner is absent this morning, so she will take notes based off the video. So just for the record, everyone is present except Clerk Turner. We would be open for comments from the audience, and we'll get into a discussion on the future of the Water Department. So if anyone's here this morning to address the board, now would be the time to please come forward. Okay, Mike, go ahead.
Most of you all know me, Mike Casey, 5132 North Montclair, lifelong resident, 60 years. I'm 60 years old, I'll be 61. I've had conversations with other people about the water company, and selling it and not selling it, and I hate to sell something that we own, but we do, we have the funds to maintain it. So my question is, the Superintendent Chancellors, where are we going in the future with the water company? What major things are we going to have done? You did mention filtration system, but what else, the whole picture here, and how much money will we have, will it take?
Well, we have-
Or if anybody else-
We have a whole set of recommendations from Woodard and Kern. As you probably know, we've already spent a lot of money with Woodard and Kern, who are national experts in all things related to water and water infrastructure. Those are online, and they're a very lengthy set of recommendations. Everything from filtration to customer, everything from lead service line, water main replacement, filtration, particles in the water, manganese, all of that. So if you have a specific question, we'll try and answer that, but those are all available to the public.
Yeah, okay. That's, that's fine. I'm glad to hear that. Water mains and stuff that hasn't been upgraded, the infrastructure, that is really important for the future of this water company. And where are we going to get the money? That's the next question. My question is, are we going to bond to build the filtration plant?
There's a-
Take out bonds or anything?
If I'm, if I'm allowed to talk-
Yeah, go ahead.
No, it's public comment, so we're not-
It's public comment, not public debate, but go ahead.
Yeah, there's an application in for that filtration system, and hopefully that would be 100% forgiveness.
Forgive, okay.
Which is a $7.5 million plant. Unfortunately, the federal just came out with a new PFAS requirement, which is going to require three years of testing, and if it is found in the water, then we'll have two years to install a more intense filtration system. So at some point, which had been mentioned by Woodard and Kern, a lot of water companies have regretted going just manganese, because it ends up costing them much more later if they would just go with the full filtration plant, which is quite significant more, you know, investment. You know, instead of $7.5 million, it might be pushing upwards of $20 million. So this is definitely something that the village is looking into. We've never filtered the water before, but it's definitely coming, so.
That'd be good. I'd like to see that done. My last thing is, is probably speaking for most of citizens that, not here, you can see, that's not really concerned. How much mon- how many times do we got to raise the water bills to catch up with Illinois American to get ours compared to theirs? Does anybody-
That's all bait, that's all in some of the recommendations.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just saying, you know, no one's got to answer me, but I'm just saying, how many times do you got to raise the water rates to catch up with Illinois American?
Well, they most likely will have to be raised for all the new infrastructure.
Right, and, and I'm talking, and it's not your guys' fault, I'm not blaming any of you. This should have been done 30, 40 years, 50 years ago, when PAFS was going. They should have done the infrastructure, and that's just the water. I know we ain't on streets and sidewalks and all that, but gee, mighty Christmas, where are we going to get the money? But if they're working on it, Mike, that's fine.
It's a good question. I, we don't know yet.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I mean, it's not your guys' fault. Now we're trying to play catch-up, trying to keep something that we own. That's my main point. I hate to lose something we own. I just absolutely hate it, but we have to have the money to fund it, to get it up to par.
Yep, we agree. I think so.
So, that's all I got to say. Thanks.
Thank you for being here.
Isn't the water rate increase in that plan, though? It, it shows you how many times we would raise it, how we'd raise it, and what it would pay for. So it is online, Mike, if you look at it. It shows you how many times the rates would be raised, what they'd be raised to, and what those rates would cover. It's all in that plan, it's online from Woodard and Kern.
And I can, I can kind of give you a brief idea of that. I mean, so basically, Mike, we're looking at, from last year, it's going to go up roughly 10% was the plan for the next 10 years. So after 10 years, it'll be double what it was last year. Now, that's before what Chris just talked about, $20 million of a filtration system. So where do we catch up to that? Good question, because, you know, we haven't built in $20 million in raising rates either, where Illinois American, that will be a turn of a valve, and then you get that. So that's not built in right now. So I think the good question that you asked is, where's the money? Because that should be really the first question that we ask ourselves, too. Where's the money?
And these are all estimates. You know, there are à la carte things, I think, that can be done, so.
And also, sorry-
Go ahead, you're their expert.
The federal government may also give forgiveness on that $20 million plan. That's not determined yet, but as the manganese also, you would think that they would be some assistance, and if they're going to force you to do that, they're going to help you, you would imagine, you know.
Just a quick comment.
Go ahead.
All right, and we're still, we're under public comment.
Actually, yeah, you're right. Go ahead.
Anyone else want to address the board? Anyone else here today to address the board? Public comment going once, twice, three times. Okay, the purpose for the meeting today is because Trustee Riker had asked me to hold this meeting, and I actually think it's a really good idea. We can get way down deep, no pun intended, on this issue, but I think we need to find out. Some of you, I think, don't have said to me privately that you don't need any more information, that your mind is made up, and I'm not trying to influence anyone here this morning, one way or the other, but where your administrator and I are concerned is, is that if we would head down a road of starting to invest money, and then all of a sudden, we're doing the ice pigging, and then all of a sudden you decide to, to get appraisals and sell, and then we've, under the opinion that you really don't recoup those hundreds of thousands of dollars that we're going to begin to spend. So if some of you are already in a position where you have your mind made up, and there's a majority of you, then that's what we're trying to find out this morning. So, and in my opinion, it's buy or sell, or there's also a third option. It's do nothing and ask the public what their opinion is in an advisory referendum. And I'm disappointed that a few weeks ago, one of the other options from Woodard and Kern, which was the public option of going out and asking the public what they wanted, and giving them information in a, in a non-biased way, an unbiased way, and getting the feedback from the public, and that got voted down. So here we are this morning, so I think we could, you know, we could talk all day about what needs to be done, what doesn't need to be done, the benefits of buying, the benefits of selling, but if some of you, again, have come to your decision, and there's a majority of you, then I think we need to move in that direction. So I'll stop there, and we can, anyone who would like to begin can, well, Mike, you've prepared some things, and Wayne, so before we get into discussion-
Dustin, how did you want to say?
Wayne, you want to start?
Okay, and Mike Bailey did prepare some facts. I hope you got those. If you didn't, we can get those to you pretty quick, but anyway.
I didn't get you that fact.
But some people don't need information.
Okay, so, so I mean, we have, I mean, a lot of these things prepared by Mike were a good summary, and I think we, you've heard them all before. Some things I have for you, you know, I'm an engineer, so the first thing I do is want to gather facts, give you facts, and haven't been able to do a lot of that. We do have the capital improvement plan, just a couple of comments on that. Yes, that does include a rate increase schedule. We've taken the first steps to get there in that plan. You're correct, Matt, it, over 10 years, it doubles the rates. Is that exceptional? No. I mean, for municipally-owned systems, Bloomington raised their rates over double in the, in the next three years. So, so it's something anticipated by most municipally-owned systems already. So they're anticipating what we call the PFAS, which is the Forever Chemicals Item 2 that I don't think was specifically mentioned in our capital plan, so that may be an addition. But most other things over a five-year and 20-year plan, including the capital plan, are included. So that's how our plan was put together, with, again, the exception of the PFAS filters, which hopefully we can combine with manganese and get some efficiencies from that system. You might recall, Woodard and Kern gave us a proposal for about, oh, it was over $20,000 for just more facts associated with potential sale of the system. I did find out yesterday afternoon that an appraisal would cost $75,000. That would be their proposal. It was an appraisal in the amount of about $75,000, so that would give us a number, but be our number, and then, you know, if we did enter into negotiations, that would be a negotiation, you know? So if Illinois American is the apparent, you know, purchase service system, they would have their own appraisal, and who knows what the cost would be. You know, the next effect of that, and I think Mike discusses that as well, financing is important if you do choose to sell the system. I think it's pretty sophisticated. Financial analysis has to happen then, both in our operations, and we've done some of that, how that affects our operations budgets, but, but also, how do you, you get a big influx of money? Do you just spend it on a wish list, or is it, you know, put in a reserve fund, or what, you know? The warning there, having been in municipal government for quite a while, is you don't dispend it. You put in a reserve fund, or pay for other things like capital improvement plans, things like that, be it water, or streets, or other things that there be needs for. The warning is, spending it on operational expenses, things like that, is, is not sustainable when you get an influx of money. So, so just the recommendation there would be a very good financial, you know, accounting and analysis if you do receive that kind of funding. So the capital plan does include the plans for rate increases there. They also mention grants and things like that, which we have been fairly successful in receiving through Illinois EPA. Congressman Sorenson just, you know, recently announced about $956,000 for Route 29. So I think that that money is, right now is, we've got good chances of getting some of that money. Lead service lines, we have funded, some funding from this revolving loan program for that as well. So that will continue, working primarily with the EPA to get funding for those things. Bonding is not, you know, I think you have to bond, you know, frankly. Eventually, even with rate increases, you're going to have some major expenses that don't cash flow for you, and I think you're going to have to bond. So it's something that, you know, most municipalities do. Most households have, you know, debt, so it's not something to be absolutely afraid of. It's just something that I think is, it happens, and again, most municipalities bond for different things. You don't want to go into debt for something like operations again, but things like major capital improvements that are long-lasting, I think that's, that's something you might think about. But I think that is mentioned in the capital plan, that bonding is certainly an option, funded through the water fund. So different ways to fund, but primarily it would be a, what's called, oh, I forget the name, but it's, it's a bond supported by revenues through the water fund. So just some comments there. I don't know where Illinois American is with water rates. We know where they are now, and they're higher than we are. I think it'll take us five years to catch up with the rates where they are now in Peoria. I think that's what the plan called for, but from what I hear, they're raising rates all the time. And Illinois American is not just a water company. They, they serve other infrastructure needs throughout their system. So it's an aggregate type of thing, so there's some efficiencies there with Illinois American, but you're also, you're, you're being charged for improvements being done wherever, on whatever system that they have. So that's something to consider, but they, they do have some efficiencies. They're a large company. They pay less for certain things, you know, so there's resources they have that, that are better than the resources that we might have. The other thing that I would like to mention is, my, you know, my biggest fear, and I've gone back and forth with this, if, if we keep the water system, a lot of responsibility. I mean, not just financing, but financing is a big one. I mean, we might need to get some help, you know, from consultants that are, you know, familiar with bonding and larger financing initiatives like this. And then the other is the engineering component. So right now, I don't think Chris or I, I won't be around forever. Chris won't be around forever, and we, you know, it's not really, it's an intense program, engineering improvement. So I think you may consider, and I think we've talked about this a little bit, you know, whether it's Woodard and Kern or some other engineering firm, actually taking a step, step above what they normally would do in just preparing plans and applying for grants, things like that, but actually helping manage the program. So taking, almost, almost like the work we do as employees, but just specifically, you know, stepping in and doing a, you know, a higher level of work in managing the program. You might also, you know, in the future, and I think that's a natural step with engineering in a smaller community, as well as a city engineer potentially hiring a consultant to perform those services, whether it's water system or other capital improvements. But I think, you know, whether it's water system or roadway capital, I think that's something the board needs to look at. We need to have programs for this, and a plan for this, and then support that. So those are just some thoughts, some new information today that I have, and certainly any questions you have as we continue discussions.
Thank, thank you, Wayne. Mike, you want to give what, your report, either up there if you're more comfortable? Well, let's get either up here, or down there, wherever you're more comfortable.
Please go speak to the board, but I'm happy to. So I prepared a report of basically questions I think that you needed to answer, and why you needed to answer those questions, and I thought those were forwarded along to you, but if not, I'll get those to you this afternoon. I'll just email all of you with that. I've compared, I've done a, a little bit of, of, I've compared a number of reports over the last six months on this issue. This was, when I was editor of the Journal Star, we covered this issue quite a bit, because, you know, there's a five-year purchase back window with the city of Peoria. This has been an ongoing issue for most of the last 30 years. Just a couple fundamental things. You asked where the money's going to come from, which is the primary question here. Well, it's going to come from the people who live here. It's going to come from your ratepayers, taxpayers. And that's true whether you keep the system or whether you sell it to a private owner. And those rates are going to go up dramatically, no matter which way you go, no matter which way you go. They're, you know, it's, generally speaking, municipal water systems have lower rates than privately-run water systems do. That's true. You can do that research on your own. I can provide that research for you. That's true across the straight, state frequently, frequently, oh, certainly true in this area, and, you know, Springfield just doubled its rates, I believe. Bloomington just doubled its rates, and not over 10 years, over one or two. Okay? So there, there are a lot of old water systems out there. There just simply are. There are some inherent efficiencies in public ownership. One is you don't have a profit motive that the private sector does. Okay? The other thing is, I think we need to double-check this, but I believe the ICC allows the purchase pies to be rolled into the rate base. Okay? So that effectively puts your ratepayers in the position of buying something they already own. Okay? But they're going to pay for this regardless. There's, there's just, there's no magic bullet here. You know, this is system, you know, the system you own, the system needs dramatic maintenance and repair. It's going to cost a lot of money, in the tens of millions of dollars. How do you raise that money? You can offset it with grants, you hope, but otherwise, you're going to, as Wayne says, you're going to have to bond for it. You borrow the money. That's what municipalities do. That's what private companies do, too, right? It's why, it's why, you know, private companies like Illinois American go back to the ICC. There's a level of regulation and oversight with the state, but frequently, they go back to the state every, probably three to five years, and ask for a rate increase. Okay? I mean, that's what, I've not known the ICC to ever turn down one of those rate increases. They may adjust it a bit, but by and large, there's, you know, a profit margin of 11% to 13%. Now, some of that may have changed. I'm not completely up to date on that. I've been away from it for a couple of years, but that has long been the case. But I think you've got to prepare your ratepayers, the people who live here, for dramatic increases, no matter which way you go. The system simply needs help. It just does. I don't think there's any way of avoiding that, and that's a public responsibility that you have. And then you have some philosophical questions to ask, answer, too, which is, you know, should the people of this community own the water that flows beneath their feet? Who should own that? And that's not just a short-term decision. That's a long-term decision that they'll be, you'll be wrestling, that people in this community will be wrestling with decades and decades from now. You know, Peoria sold its, sold its water company in the 19th century. Okay? They're still dealing with that 125 years later. Right? So this is a long-term, really important decision, and it's a hard decision. I'll grant you all of that. I'm happy to answer any of your questions, but I think the most important thing, frankly, is that I get this document in your hand, so you can see just sort of some of the research we've done and that sort of thing. So, anyway.
So we'll stop there, and if anyone has questions for Mike, or Wayne, or just discussion, we'll, so.
Clarification question for Wayne, actually, before you ask your question.
Okay.
Could we make copies of?
Go ahead, trustee de voir.
Director Aldrich- When you're saying that Woodard and Kern came back with their proposal for $75,000 with the appraisal, does that include the fact-finding in the public meetings?
No, it does not.
Okay, so do we have a number to do the appraisal plus that information?
Yeah, the, the other number is around $25,000, as I recall.
So we'd be looking at $100,000 to hit what, what I want us to do, but then also take into account what Trustee-
Yeah, just, just to get an appraisal, and, and again, what's the appraisal mean? Because that may not be the, probably wouldn't be the final cost of the system.
Okay, thank you.
So a few thoughts, and I'm just going to, in no particular order, just, I've been on the fence and off the fence about retaining or selling several times, and what I got from the Woodard and Kern analysis was that even with our rate increases, at the end of that 20-year plan, we were still cheaper than American Water. So even with our rate increases, that's not accounting any other pending rate increases, at the end of our plan to make significant improvements in our systems, we were still cheaper. Did I read that right?
I think that's, we anticipate that. We don't know where their system rates are going to be.
Right, so their rates are going to go up.
They're higher now, and from what I hear, they're-
Right.
-increasing the rates all the time for different reasons.
So the rates, rates are going to increase, but at the end of our plan, our rates are still cheaper than what American Water is today. When I toured with the American Water crew on their filtration plant down here on Route 29, they don't have PFAS treatments, and they're, they're not going to just eat those costs. So when they implement PFAS treatments, the rates are going to go up again, and they're going to use those treatment requirements as an excuse to raise their rates on top of what their profit margin is. So from what I got from the rate analysis and our capital plan is that even though we have to raise our rates significantly, we can still offer the citizens, citizens of Peoria Heights better value for their dollar. I know it's not going to be a quick process. When people get brown water out of their faucets, they're not happy, and they're not going to be happy paying more for the brown water. But they're going to be paying more for the brown water even with American Water, because American Water told me that, you know, it may take two, three, four years, if that, to correct the brown water, and that was just an estimate, because they don't know the full scale of the lack of infrastructure improvements that we've done over the last decades, as Mike attested to. So it's possible that we could be paying significantly more for the water, the American Water rates, and also paying for the purchase, as Mike Bailey pointed out, and still have brown water. So to be honest with you, Mayor, I've, I've told you that I wasn't in favor of selling, and then I've also said I was in favor of selling, and to be honest, I'm back on the fence, because the PFAS thing scares me, because there's a lot involved in that. Not only do you got to filter it, that you got to dispose of that waste somehow. And I knew these regulations were coming.
So I, I think, and it's here, right? So Brandon's absolutely right that these regulations are here, and we're going to have to do EPA filtration of these, not just manganese, which is really all we had built in on the plan. Now we're talking about things that could exacerbate the cost, triple what we had anticipated to filter out. Then we have to dispose of it, find someone who's willing to take that hot potato, and, you know, I don't think people are going to be lining up to do that. I mean, they'll charge us for it, but my question, I think, really, what we haven't discussed here, and I think what we really do, what we've come to find out in other areas, is that if we want to do our own filtration system, it's going to take people to do that. And what we've come to find out in other areas where we've been talking about with this budget season is people cost money. And with that, I guess I'm going to direct this to Superintendent Chandler. If we have to do our own filtration system, regulating these PFAS or Forever Chemicals, how many people will it require to do that? Village employees that would, we need to hire on to manage this filtration system, as well as what type of licenses will it require? Water licenses for these people to have, because, you know, in the past, we've had a really hard time holding on to people with a water license, and will this require even a higher level of water license to manage? So do you mind?
No, I don't mind at all. So to run a filtration plant like that requires a Class A water license, which we have one employee who has passed the test to get an A, but you have to have, I believe it's at least three years of experience before you can be the responsible operator that signs off on that. So in the meantime, we would have to contract someone to sign off on our filtration system, because we wouldn't have somebody with the license. Now, at that point, obviously, if we're going this way, we can start pushing our guys to move to an A, and then when, you don't get the experience until you actually work in an A plant.
But that's not an unusual circumstance to have-
No.
-contract with someone with a higher license to come in.
No, it's not, but I will also say that I can tell you right now, the Public Works is not going to be able to run a filtration system with the amount of people we have right now.
How many additions?
I, I can't, I, I really can't honestly answer that. I just know it is definitely more.
Sure.
I don't think it's 10 people.
And it's difficult even for American Water to answer that question, because when we toured the facility, they don't have a solution even. They're, they were spending, I think they said at the time, $30 million already to address this in anticipation- in anticipation of what was announced this past week. And they don't know how to dispose of these forever chemicals either, yet.
Okay, and I was, yeah, so, so, let's, and I'll talk on that. So with the employees, with the rate analysis Brandon just brought up, was that included when we were, I didn't think it was?
There were some employees, as I recall, some operational expenses in the capital plan.
Now with a filtration plant that this anticipates with the PFASs, does the plant operate eight hours a day, nine to five? Or does it operate 24/7?
That's unfortunate, that's another, I can't give you a solid answer. I assume that it would be a 24/7 plant, like somebody would have...
It's like our pumps operate 24 hours a day.
Right, yeah. Luckily, those are automated.
It does on 29 as well.
So we'll need someone there...
Possibly, yes.
24/7.
Yeah.
You either need that or there's a system, you know, a SCADA system or something, that somebody...
But I don't know if A filtration requires somebody on scene all the time or not. I don't know. I can't answer that.
I mean, a lot of this is variable too, right? Like the regulation just came out. They haven't set the full federal standard yet. So we are a little bit in a limbo that I don't know that we'll get some of these questions answered until the federal government says this is what the requirements are.
Well, I think they came out with the numbers. They're just, you have three years to do testing. And then after that, if you have the presence, then you have to, you have two years to put a filtration system in, which sounds really fast to me.
And interestingly, this is only six chemicals that they've decided to require this testing on. There are 15,000 chemicals.
Right, yeah.
And this conversation, I think in Washington is really broad because all of the studies that are being done about cancers being more prevalent amongst younger people. So, I mean, it's gonna be more chemicals and I think more legislation to protect water. And I'm in favor of that. I think it's good that we're now keeping these horrible chemicals out of the system, or at least trying to. So this, I think, is gonna be an ongoing conversation at the state, local, and federal level for a long time.
And you know, the frustrating thing is that a lot of these chemicals haven't been produced since the 70s. And they're still prevalent in water. So it's a huge issue. And I lost my question that I was gonna ask Chris, I wanted to go. I'm sure it'll come back to me.
Why don't you thank, anyone else that hasn't spoken?
So, part of the reason why I wanted to ask for this today is, I've talked to a couple of you guys individually. I finally have had some free time to take a tour with Chandler over there and asked him a lot of questions and had some questions come up afterwards. And some of the thoughts that I've had is, you know, I'm a third, almost fourth-generation Heights person. And, you know, through the years, some of the things that have been instilled in me is if it's broke, fix it yourself kind of feeling. And I know that that's kind of impossible with our water structure right now. But at the same time, it is ours. And it has always been ours, and it has never been anybody else's. And I am, I am in favor of keeping it. And I'm not on a fence, I'm not swaying. I understand that the money is a lot. I understand that the work is a lot. But I don't shy away from hard work either. And I know the money has to come from someplace. And I have a feeling that if we went out to the public, I mean, we'd probably get a good majority of them to say that if, they'll pay for it, but they wanna see something done. They wanna see things change. They don't wanna see us just sit here and talk about it. They wanna see the guys out doing something or have people in here saying, okay, we're gonna start doing this. They wanna see the plan. They wanna see where we're gonna start and where we're gonna finish. Now, one of the things trustee Kazan and I have been working on is the Prospect Road project, which I emphasized when we met with everybody how important doing the infrastructure underneath was more important to me than what it looked like when it was done. And that is a huge portion of Peoria Heights to do Prospect Road. And now we've got down on...
29.
Down on 29, that's also going to be covered by a lot of it. But we need to figure out what to do up here, and we need to get started on it. And we need to, I don't want to sell the water. I think our guys do a great job. I think there is something to be said about the pride that's held in owning our own water. And the people that live in the community also are taking care of it. When it comes to American Water, they don't just have us. We are not the top of their priority list. So if we have a problem or the filtration system or all this stuff, we're not, we're gonna be the new kid on the block to them. And they're not going to say, well, we gotta get Peoria Heights done because they just signed with us. They're gonna say, this one's here, and this one's more important, and this one's bigger. But it's not just the turn of a valve for American Water, because it's the infrastructure underneath. It's still gonna be flowing through the same pipes. It's still gonna be flowing through the same rusty pipes that we've got now. And I think the ice picking's going to buy us a little bit of time. But in the sections that haven't been done, we can do the ice picking and then, but we've gotta start taking it out and putting the new stuff in. If we've got a bond, we've got a bond, and we pay it off. Some notes I've been taking over here, sorry. Have we reached out to any of the other public-owned municipalities that own their own water and see where their plans have kind of gotten? Just to kind of get an idea of where everybody else is at? Because we're not the only ones with this problem.
That's a good question. I know Woodard and Current has, because they represent so many communities. But Wayne, have you specifically reached out to any?
I have not. I mean, I can tell you, some systems have been, for example, Normal has, you know, 10 years ago started to raise rates and started to do a system improvement. So, distribution-wise, you know, but everybody, Bloomington evidently has it. So Bloomington, you know, says, well, we're gonna have to raise your rates quite a lot. So it'll vary like that. But I think PFAS is a new thing. We may have a manganese issue that other communities don't have. We don't, our water source is readily available. I mean, we have some benefits. All we do have to do is pump it up the hill, basically. So there are some benefits there. But I haven't reached out specifically.
As of 2017, less than 13 percent of communities in Illinois owned their own water. So I'm sure that's diminished since then. But Morton just built their own water facility. So that would be a community that we could, you know, definitely talk to and visit.
Yeah, I mean, and I'd be willing to meet with them just to get some ideas because we're not in this alone. And I kind of feel like we're, we do a lot of the talking, and we're back and forth about whether to sell to American Water. And yes, it seems like the easy way out. But when the money's gone from whatever American Water gives us, the money's gone. And if another huge infrastructure project, whether it be how to figure out what we do with the tower when there's no water in it, or something else major happens, that money, that money's just gonna be red, red, red. It's never gonna be going up again. So at least with American, at least with keeping our own water system, the money is coming in. And if we have to raise the rates, as long as the citizens are seeing the improvements being done and feeling like they're happening in a timely manner, I don't, I don't know that it's going to raise kind of the big issue of rate increases that we're anticipating.
The only thing I would mention, say, when you said that they see the changes being made, these are changes that are gonna happen over five to 20 years.
Right.
They're not gonna see these changes. Most of the changes are underground.
Yes, but they're gonna see the work, they're gonna, they'll see the work being done. I mean, they'll know we'll do the updates, well, okay, this is the block that's being done at this point. Like, the open communication between the people and the work being done, too. I think if, if we say that, okay, this section is being done right now and avoid this area and we're gonna replace all this piping in here, it's just a start. I mean, but it's, it speaks volumes.
Chris, how many water mains does Peoria Heights have?
I believe it's about 37 miles of water mains.
Okay. And each time we replace a main, we have to get EPA approval, right?
Well, it has to be, it has to be engineered and permitted.
And that can take anywhere between six months and a year, roughly.
You could plan on doing so much every year and get ahead of it like that, you know?
So my point is, this stuff takes a long time.
Yeah. I mean, I learned that with the Prospect Project.
Right, and I think a lot of our families, they're busy, you know, raising their families. Both parents are working. A lot of them aren't gonna see the change. They're not gonna see that we're working. But they are gonna still see brown water when they turn on their faucet. So I think our communicate, I agree, our communication has to be there. And then getting back real quickly, I remember what I was gonna say earlier, is when we were touring with American Water, they have detected PFAS in both the San Cody. I think they said the same, I don't know if they said the surface one. I don't know if they talked about the river. But they said they had detected through their own internal stuff PFAS.
Right. And I, real quick, a number that trustee Kazan put out was, what, less than 13 percent? Well, they, they, they believe this will affect 6 to 10 percent of water systems in the country. So it sounds like it's gonna affect all the municipally-owned water supplies quite more than it's gonna affect the, you know, the private utilities. Because they, you know, they own a major, major majority of the water supplies.
Some of the studies I've seen, Mike, and I don't know if it came from you or not, maybe you recall this. I think it is correct that a lot of municipalities did sell their water companies, but because they saw that price tag and they saw the amount of money that they would get. But I know there's a lot of regret out there in communities that is, have you studied that? Communities that have sold and...
Yeah, I would actually encourage you to talk to...
Would you mind taking the mic, just so everybody at home can hear it? Because I know a lot of people watching this.
I would encourage you, I would encourage you to talk to communities like Pekin and Peoria that do have private ownership of their water systems and ask them what their experience has been. You know, not just the municipally-owned water systems in this area. And obviously, the challenges that they have. But I would say both sides have their issues. And you need as full picture as you can possibly get. And there are groups in town, too, that you can talk to. You need as much information as you can get. But there was, you know, a pro Peoria purchase, repurchase of the water system group in town.
Is that PAG?
Yeah, yeah, I believe they have very strong opinions on this. And you might wanna hear them out. We can certainly arrange all of that. But, and Illinois American has been here. And they would probably have, well, I know they would have a different story than PAG had, has. But you ought to hear all of those things. And at the end of the day, you're gonna weigh those things, right?
So a question for you, Mike. I followed the Peoria discussion quite closely. But, but what I saw from those discussions wasn't necessarily complaints about water quality.
Yeah, I must say, I don't think that there's...
Or the availability of water.
Yeah, no.
Their discussions were a private company making profit versus non-profit.
Yeah, it's a cost thing, right? The cost, the cost to their citizens of having, you know, healthy, reliable, safe water supply, sure.
Right. There was no concerns about the safety of the water. There was no, because American Water has a pretty, pretty good operation down there.
Yes, I think very few people question...
But the concerns were, as most things are in the United States, a political divide versus what should be a profit-based service and what should be nonprofit. But when you look at what it costs to run these systems, I mean, you said the margin was 10 percent. Well, in the grand scheme of things, I mean,
Right, the ICC...
It would be significantly cheaper if Peoria took it on, from what I understood, from what I read. Because, one, they would have to get a huge loan. And then the operational costs, nothing Peoria does is cheaper.
Well, the big, the big question mark is how much the repurchase price would be.
Right.
And that's something that, you know, you hire three appraisers, and they take a mill, and then it goes to court inevitably, and there's a negotiation. And ultimately, a judge decides what's a fair purchase price. And then, you know, the community's leadership, the city council or village board, has to make a decision whether they wanna go ahead and spend their taxpayers' money that way.
What I got from it was, at the end of the day, if Peoria was successful, they may have saved $10 on their bill. It wasn't, it didn't seem significant.
Well, it had a lot to do, I think, with economic development. It had a lot to do with...
Well, so Peoria's got other issues, right? And so one of the things you have to decide is, you know, the money you spend on a water company or a fire department or anything else is money you may not be able to spend somewhere else where there are needs, right? So Peoria has a combined sewer overflow problem, which is a $200 million-plus fix. So that's, that's a lot of borrowing there, right? And then they have street maintenance they have to do, and they have to do a lot of different things. And so you throw another potentially, and I'm just throwing this, I'm not saying this is the exact number, but another potentially $300 million in borrowing out there to repurchase the water company, that's a lot of debt, right?
The operation of it.
Yeah, every community's got very specific needs, yeah.
I said this many times, I am glad we have our problems. But trustee Riker... It's Saturday morning, I'm not awake yet.
Wait just a minute, I did wanna interject, though. And I think it's helpful to look at what's occurred in Peoria and Pekin. But I think it's more helpful to compare apples to apples. Smaller communities are sides that have either kept their water or have sold it maybe years ago. And do they regret that decision today? That I think is...
So it's not only Peoria, but Pekin, there was a repurchase attempt in Pekin. There are certainly discussions about that within the last 15 or 20 years. There was some unhappiness there. And again, it didn't go anywhere. You know, the big looming thing, the big looming cloud is how much it's gonna be. And it's a bit of a guessing game until you get right down to it. And you can spend a lot of money, you can spend a lot of money upfront just preparing to find out what the purchase price is going to be.
Before I forget again, I do think that if we do retain the water company, the rates should fund water operations. The water company should be operated as a company. And we shouldn't be, for the lack of a better term, bailing them out all the time. The rates should support the infrastructure so that we don't make the mistakes of generations past.
Yes.
And not putting the capital and the investments so that future Heights generations don't have to deal with this issue.
No, and I think if, I mean, when we do it, do it right the first time. I mean, I understand that it's a lot of money, and I understand that it's gonna raise the, raise the rates. And not everybody is going to be happy about it. But one of the problems, one of the mistakes that was made in the past is that as we've been doing it, we've been putting Band-Aids on broken arms as opposed to repairing completely, spending the money then, and instead of having one big bill, having lots of little bills over time. And I understand that would have accrued a little bit, but now we've got one big bill. And even though it's gonna take us years to, to try to fix all these problems, that big bill's just gonna keep going. As opposed to, as we were repairing them, we should have been doing it a different way and kind of preparing for the future of what's coming, so.
And I just wanna say, I'm right with you, trustee Riker. It's broke, let's not get rid of it. Let's fix it. We, you know, it seems like we do that a lot. But once this is gone, it's gone. There's no getting it back. And the water company pays for a lot of stuff that happens within this village. And we have no choice, but we have to, it's ours, we need to fix it. And if we gotta raise the rates, because a lot of people I talk to, they don't care, they wanna keep it. You know, they want it fixed, they want quality water. But they want to keep the water company. Because if we sell to Illinois American Water, well, how long are we gonna hang on to that? Money to the D, give us. Excuse me. But I am dead set against selling this at all. We're keeping it, if I can do anything about it. I am completely against selling it. Figure out what it's gonna cost, figure out how we're gonna do. If we gotta bond, we gotta bond. But let's take care of this and keep it going for the future of Peoria Heights. Otherwise, why don't we just become a neighborhood of Peoria? Because that goes, we're going. Simple as that.
I kinda wanna just, trustee Weisberg, you had said, you had talked a little bit about the brown water and the pipes, and I just kinda wanted to touch on that a little bit more. So obviously, clean water and drinkable water is the most important priority. And I know that Illinois American does have, they have great water, right? Like, nothing, they're not getting some of the complaints that we are. But even if they turned the faucet on to their water right now, our pipes are the problem, right? So the ice picking did seem to turn, you know, slow down some of the brown water complaints by being able to clean out some of the debris that's left over in the pipes. But even if Illinois American puts their water into our pipes, which we've heard that the EPA wouldn't allow them to do, unless we pull up all those pipes or they come in and do the ice picking, we're still gonna have brown water. I mean, and they stood here themselves and told us, like, it could be potentially two to three years before they could even pump their water into our pipes because the EPA would have to make sure that it was compatible with the buildup that's in there. But they themselves are not without brown water complaints. They also said that as well. I definitely think the ice picking was something to buy us time to kind of get through some of this because it would take a lot, you know, it could take five to 20 years, or it will take five to 20 years. But I think the community seeing that we are investing in the ice picking is a positive, right? Like, that's showing them that we're working on it. And maybe it's something we have to factor in, you know, for the next several years to make sure that it's done. One thing, though, that we did hear about Illinois American is that they, because they're a private company and not a municipality, they are not eligible for some of these federal grants. So if they have to put in $20 million to put in something for PFAS, like, they're not gonna do that out of the charity of their heart, right? Like, so when this regulation hits them, their water rates will go up for that, too, where we could potentially take on a forgivable grant and still be able to have the same sort of treatment. I would say, like you, I have been back and forth. Like, at first, I was like, no, I don't wanna sell it. Then I toured Illinois American, and I'm like, well, this is the best for the people, right? And I spent a lot of time researching it. But I would say, at this point, I'm, I'm back to, I would rather us invest in our own community and fixing it ourselves because I don't think going to Illinois American is gonna be... because I don't think going to Illinois American is going to be a quick fix, yes, it's a quick chunk of money, but I don't think it's going to solve all the problems. And then, similarly, like how we felt with the fire department, we lose then all control. So if there is a problem with the water, like, yes, I know that Illinois American right now is telling us that, you know, they have our back, and we know people that are in charge of the district that we lie in right now, but what happens when those people retire, or those people get promotions and then we don't have it?
And it's not unusual for a company that large to make promises they can't keep.
Also, we've, ourselves, this board that sat here has had several issues with how they handle their construction at the end of a project. So, one, if they did come in and replace a bunch of pipes, how long are our road sidewalks in neighborhood going to be tore up? And we have no control on getting those roads and sidewalks taken care of for them, because they own the, the right of way that those pipes went in and if we sell it. So those are just a couple of thoughts I had based on this conversation we're having today.
And then, Mayor, I do think at some point, because, I do think at some point we need an up or down vote on whether we entertain a sale or not, that way, we're just not, but, on the fence.
I think, so that meeting with Illinois, or that meeting with Woodard and Kern, I think with bringing in the people though, was what we were going towards, right?
Right.
That's the goal that we wanted to have.
Yeah, but if we're, if we're not going to, if we're not going to sell, then I wouldn't want to spend the $20,000 too.
I, I, I would agree, but that, that piece again, that was voted down, that Wayne, I think, talked down from 60,000 to 20, included, you know, what I had envisioned was that we would ask Mike or a moderator who didn't have any preference one way or the other, to give the public all this information unbiased, and to get feedback from the public, and, and us to learn ourselves, so, but, but again, I think the most critical point is, we are on a really tight budget this year, and we're getting ready to spend money on ice picking, and if we cancel that cost, how much does it?
Forty thousand.
Forty thousand, you know, we've got a $6,000, I think, window in our budget this year, so that's why there is a sense of urgency from myself and your administrator, and to remind you of all these things that are, that are coming our way, so.
Yeah, personally, I would like to see an up and down vote on whether we're even going to entertain the idea of selling, because if we're not, I'd rather take that $20,000 and invest it in the water infrastructure. And then, getting back to people not seeing what's done, what I would like to see is like, an annual report that is released to the public each year, what we've done, the rate analysis, how much your rates have gone up, this is what we've done, put it on paper, so they may not see it being done, but at least they can review a report and know that we're working on it.
Is part of the Woodard and Kern responsibility, if, if we said we're not going to sell, do they, in part of their plan that they've already given us, if we were to say hypothetically, the part that we've already ice pigged, because we've already ice pigged them, they're the first section that's going to get the infrastructure redone, and then the second section that gets ice pigged, they're the next section to be done, and then the third section, and that way there's like this, this ladder of work that's being done, is that something that Woodard and Kern puts out there for us, is that something that we decide as a municipality? How does that, how does that work?
Well, they, they work for us, so they are, they're consultants, but actually, a little history on Woodard and Kern, and I first met them when I went to the Illinois Municipal League Conference quite a few years ago, before we even hired Wayne, and then I think Wayne came on board and we had this conversation on the phone with Jim Revan, who's one of their, one of their vice presidents, or one of their managers of the company, and they're a big company, and one of the questions he asked me at that time is, do you want, are you looking to sell or to keep? I said, no, we want to fix our water, we want to repair and invest in our water system. They go both ways, I mean, I think, I think the city of Peoria used them to help do the due diligence on a, on a buyback, but they like to work with communities, from what Jim had mentioned to me, they like to work with communities who want to invest in their own, but they could, they could do, they're able to do anything. If you decided to sell, then, you know, they, they would be able to go through the appraisal process with us, there's, there's other companies out there that, that do that, we looked at other companies, but the board at that time selected them, and I, I think they've got a lot of national experience as far as what they do, Wayne, don't they?
I mean, a couple of comments to that, to your question, yeah, we're doing like some preliminary engineering, hopefully this year, like the water modeling, so you got to do some upfront engineering, just to see what you got, and sometimes that'll come up with, well, we got a problem here, and this could very well be, you know, a certain percentage of our brown water issue, but, so it's, it's informed by us and staff and everything else, but that's, that's what the capital plan is, it's kind of a, a logical step forward, that can be changed, it's a living document, but, again, I would encourage, Woodard and Kern is good, you know, with any consultant, it's who you're working with, you know, so, I mean, are they responsive, are they there at your side? And that's, that's that next step I talked about, that I would recommend, if we do keep the water system, is maybe increasing their scope of work, it may cost a little bit more, but you're having somebody, and again, not Chris and I, if I leave, or Chris has other responsibilities, then they're there, I mean, they're there for you, and they're, they're kind of your arm as far as the water, so the questions go to them, and they have a much more responsibility, so, they're very competent, there's other companies out there, but Woodard and Kern I like because they do specialize in water systems, and they have kind of national reach there, so, if that answers your question.
Yeah, their plan, their rate analysis and improvement plan was predicated on the idea that we kept it, so.
Well, and you're all entitled to change your mind, we, we, I think a lot of us have been on one side of this and on the other, but again, this all, this whole conversation started with the board at that time, that we're keeping it, and we've already spent a lot of money in this, Dustin, I don't know if you have a number, but it's, it's in the tens of thousands of dollars that we have spent already, so, that's, this, you're right, Trustee Weisenberg, that plan was based on us investing and, and making improvements for our own system.
Well, and, so I think that, you know, as far as what Trustee Gett said, you know, as far as village autonomy, you know, keeping our identity, holding on to the water system makes a lot of sense, that we, you know, maintain it, we, we upgrade it, we invest as much money as we can, and we, we hire people to work it, I think that makes, you know, as far as keeping our identity, that makes a lot of sense. The problem is, on the other hand, is we also lose our identity if it bankrupts us, and we don't have any money to do that. So, if we can't afford to hire people with Class A licenses to run a $20 million water filtration system 24/7, and then pay their pensions, I, I do think that there are costs here that we're not considering, and that will pop up when we get there. And I am extremely worried that this will really cost a lot of money. Now, it will, would it cost a lot of money for Illinois American to do it? Yeah, but they have people to do it, they're doing it. I, I, I think that there will be some cost associated, now, to Trustee Weisenberg, we're going to state it, if we're going to build all of that into the, the rates that we charge people, then that will, that'll have to happen, but I, I do think this will be more expensive than what we're thinking.
I think it definitely will, go ahead, finish.
And I, just one last thing, I think that as far as other communities looking for federal grants and things like that, every community's going to be asking for money from the federal government, every single one, so we need $20 million, so does every other community, every community owns their own water, is going to want to do exactly what we're doing, and so if everyone's literally going to that well, I don't know how much money's in the well before it runs dry.
Well, they just put $1 billion in, and that seems like a lot of money, but it's not a lot of money for the entire country for this new announcement.
Right, if you, if you, and I saw that article, Trustee Kazam, they put $1 billion in there, however, DuPont and 3M are paying $20 billion in fines.
Right.
So, the federal government is setting aside $1 billion, but 3M and DuPont, who created these chemicals, are paying $20 billion, just to show you the magnitude of, we're putting this money much aside, but the people who created them just paid 20 times that, and, so there's not a whole lot of money to go around here.
Right.
I'm, I'm just very concerned, and I get it from the village identity perspective and our autonomy, but I do, I am concerned about us just not having enough money to pay the bills at some point.
And, and it's not that I don't agree, because I do, it is, it's a lot of money and, and the bankroll. I also think though, if they've set aside $1 billion, that's also the urgency to applying early, and getting it, getting whatever grants that we can apply for, apply for them right now, rather than waiting a couple of years to figure it out, or a couple of months, that you get in on them early, you're the first couple on their desk, and hopefully we can get, you know, get some favoritism on that, I guess, but something to consider, I mean, if we can, I know, I just looked it up, and just on a regular Google search, the filter, a licensed filtration person is $82,000 a year. I understand, it's a lot of money, but we know now, it's still going to be, what, two, two years or so, three years before the filtration system's even built, so it's something else to consider, is, okay, we're going to plan ahead for the fact that we're going to have to hire somebody with this license at, I mean, that might even be the minimum, but we start planning now for it, and setting that money aside, or planning ahead, and the money that we put into this filtration system, and then we get it back, that money goes towards saving for the person that's going to have to do this.
I have a question for Wayne, and I've been taking some notes too, obviously, we all want the same thing, we want clean water for our residents, and ideally, it would be in our own community, we would be providing that water, and we, it would be working as a functioning business where we would be paying for it. There are communities all over the country, I think 50,000 communities, that are facing failing infrastructure in this issue, so it's not just us. A lot of the words that I'm thinking about are responsibility, this is going to be a huge responsibility if we take it on ourselves, and also if we decide, you know, to sell, but the responsibility of health and safety is something that we need to take into concern, into consideration, time and money, and what's really scaring me the most right now is the unknown, because there's unknown in the cost of these filtration systems for our own community, and also, of course, there's unknown in the other, in going the other direction, but my question for Wayne is, with regard to the time consideration, I think that most of us on, we've had these conversations amongst ourselves, have filtration systems on our own homes, but not everybody in our community can afford to have that, which is really a shame, a lot of people don't have even water softeners, which mitigates, I think, the brown water, I don't know if Chris would agree with me, but I've seen this example in different households, just on a personal level, are there grants out there that could help our residents to get filtration systems on their own home? Because we all know that this is going to take time, we know-
Well, I mean, a couple of comments on that, is we're helped by some of our residents being in the lower income bracket, we're helped by the revolving loan program, so that's helped us, you know, in receiving loans that, you know, 100% principal forgiveness type loans. My, you know, my opinion is, a good water system is, you don't need filters, you know, folks may have water softeners because the water's hard, some treatment systems actually treat for, you know, soften their water, so, I'm not aware of those systems, you know, or those grants for individuals.
Can we, can we look into something like that though, and see if there is anything?
We can.
Especially with us having the low income.
Yeah, and, and I can tell you that they're difficult, from this end, they're very difficult for administration, it's-
Well, it's like what we've just been going through with the HUD grant, yeah, takes a lot of time and doesn't address-
Right, but, but I mean, I think our goal, you know, if it were me, I'm an engineer again, my goal is to make our water good enough so they don't need a filter.
Yes, but at the same time, we need to buy, I guess, buy a little time for it too, and if, if we had something that we could offer to the residents of, and I've, I've talked to, I believe, Mayor and Chief Sutton, and a couple other board members, like when I first came on, that was one of the first things I thought of, was some way to offer our residents that if they had a, had a water filtration system put into their home, they could catch a break on maybe one of their water bills, like bring in and we'll reimburse you up to so much towards your next water bill, just to offset that cost for you, to try to help bring the water coming in be a little bit healthier, and yes, they'll still have to buy their filters, but the filters aren't astronomically expensive, depending on your water system, but to be able to offer some sort of program to our residents right now, while, while we work to fix the water system and, and try to bring it into their homes a little bit safer.
Well, we'll look for that, I mean, there's a water conference next week here in town, so we'll, we'll ask around and see what, what's available to folks.
I mean, I don't think it would be out of the ordinary to, to select, if a, if a community selected a preferred contractor that would give discounts to people, but the thing is, they have to be maintained, I don't know how often those filters need to be changed.
Well, and that's, and that's something too, that would be an understanding between the person and the contractor too, is that, you know, okay, yes, they're going to come in and they're, they're going to install it for them, but you have, you're responsible for making sure that your, your filter is changed on a regular basis, and, you know, it's not the contractor's problem, it's just, I mean, it's something that comes along with it, no matter what.
I, I think, I think in, in concept, you could put a plan together that would target low income users in the water system, or maybe we identified some contractors that would give discounts, but we'd have to make sure the village wasn't liable, and they have to pay for installation and all that, but I, I think it's possible.
And then to offer some kind of incentive for them to do it, I mean, I know it would, it would cut into our profits ever so slightly, but it would only, I mean, for a minimal amount of time even, so.
Chris, just your opinion, do you have any, like, a percentage of some, of some of the brown water, is it service lines that the homeowner has, would that be a large percentage, or is it small?
It's, it's hard to say, I, I have, I will say, I think that when people say, we have brown water, it literally sounds like everybody in the village has brown water, and that is not the case at all. I think, obviously, we've, over the last probably 10 years, our manganese has built up a lot, and is causing more and more issues, and the ice picking did do a great job up here and in the Toledo area, when we flushed our hydrants, they, they cleaned out a lot faster, they were not as dirty, we're moving that way, we're hopefully heading down, and potentially getting that out, and then, you know, obviously, a manganese filter is going to stop building, you know, that won't be introduced into the system anymore, so the, the buildup is going to stop. Certainly, there's, there are many homes, several homes in the Heights that have older plumbing, you know, these houses are 70 years old, and guess what, their plumbing's 70 years old, their house is 90 years old, their plumbing's pretty old, and if, if your water is dirty initially for 15 or 30 seconds, and then it goes clean, that's an internal plumbing issue. The water that's clean is what's coming from the water main, and certainly, we, when we have our water main repairs, we're flushing hydrants, water main repairs, just like flushing hydrants, just moving more water than it's used to, and that, that stirs stuff, and it stirs stuff up, and it takes time for that to settle down, it is unfortunate, that's where we're at, the ice picking, we're trying to address it, and it, it's just, it's going to take time, and I, I just really, everybody in the Heights does not have brown water every day, and I know that a lot of people say they, you know, like people hear, you know, 15 different people say, I have brown water, brown water, brown water, well, the water might have only been brown for 30 seconds, and that could have come from their internal plumbing, we certainly, we certainly do have issues, and we are addressing them.
On the rare occasion that somebody posts a picture, for example, of their bathtub being full, what, that's probably not internal plumbing, am I wrong?
Probably not, but I've been, many situations where we did have a stir up in the system-
Yeah.
And then, they, they'll run their tub full, and, you know, it's, has to dilute down, well, instead of draining it and starting over, they just keep putting the water in the brown water, so it's still brown. So, I've, on many occasions, just said, let's let it drain down all the way, let's let it run, and it clears up, and that being from a water main break, or us flushing hydrants, you know, we had, like, we had a major, major repair last week on the hill, that stirred, stirred some water up, it's unfortunate, but that, all of our water came through that pipe, and it had to be fixed.
Yeah.
So, when you drain that pipe and it starts, then you go back to fill it up, it stirs everything up, and that's the kind of thing that happens, and unfortunately, we have an old water system, so yes, we do have water main breaks, we just had a breakup here on Glen.
So, yes, we do have water main breaks, we just had a break up here on Glen.
When, when you, okay, so when you fix, can you describe that, what you mean by fix? Do you replace that section of pipe with a new lead pipe, or do you put a new material in, or do you put just a coating over it? How do you fix it?
Well, if, our water mains are not lead, that's, those are just, the service lines are lead. If we come across a lead service line that we have to repair, we have to replace it from, we have to run a whole new line.
What are they, what are the, what are they made out of, the mains?
They're cast iron, ductile iron, or plastic.
Okay.
Mostly cast iron.
Sorry. Uneducated over here.
Right, from like the 1930s, basically.
Okay.
So, when we have a water main break, you know, we have to dig down and hopefully we can fix it without shutting the water main off.
Okay.
If we have to shut it off because it's on a bell, or it's just too big of a leak and we just can't keep up with water, we have to shut it down, that triggers a boil order. So, most of the time, we try and fix them without having to shut them down.
Okay.
And that's our key. But when that, when a break happens, the water starts going different ways and it stirs, stirs stuff up and our whole system's connected, it's not like just that neighborhood is separate and, you know, everything is connected, so.
Would a, would a hydrant flush right after one of those help that problem or no?
Yeah, and we do do that. We do try and flush them out as much as we can.
These, these are all questions I'm asking based on my lack of knowledge, but also the public's lack of knowledge of how the sys, how the process works as well. So, I mean, when most people, you know, they see a water main break or something like that, and then all of a sudden, we see all these people complaining about water, I want them to, I want them to know what your process is too, so that they understand it's not just, "We fixed the hole, we covered the hole and we're out of here."
Right.
Like you guys, there's, there's a lucrative process to fixing each of this, but it also, because of the water that's going each way, you know, if you get a bathtub full of water, let it drain completely, rinse out your bathtub and then fill it again, you know, and if it's still there, then, then there's a problem. But if you get a bathtub full, you empty it and it's clear water, then your problem's probably done.
Right.
But it is, it is an issue with people that, you know, one person has a bathtub full of water, and I've noticed this, that everybody, all of a sudden, all the comments are the brown water that they have, but it might not be the brown water they had that day. Could've been the one they had last week. So, that's, that's the, the problem with social media at this point too, is, is that. But I, I don't have brown water in my house. I don't have a filtration system, I don't have a water softener. I, the only time that I ever noticed dark water in my house is after hydrant flush. And, and it literally is, run it, just don't do laundry that day, or run, run water for a couple of minutes and that's it, and it's usually only toilet water that I notice, so.
Right. And we, and we, with our new notification system, we're letting people know.
So, we're making an effort to let people know and try to get the information out there. It's just by me asking these questions and hopefully the, the people seeing the video and stuff like that, I'm hoping to increase their knowledge as well and not so much in the dark about, you know, how we fix it and what we're doing, that we're not doing nothing, that we're, we're all trying to do something, we just, just don't know what the right decision is yet.
I would also like to say that when we did have this major repair, it was, like I said, it was the main line, all of our water comes up that hill through that pipe. And we were fortunate that Illinois American helped us get that cross connection in, because we had to open that up and use their water for about eight hours, because we would not have had water. And it was a good thing that we worked together and got that cross connection in, because we, it would have been a lot worse, for sure.
You know, they provide that water at no cost, or they get charges per gallon?
No, it's not per gallon, right now, there's a daily rate. But, and, and there's actually, there's actually, since that is new, there's a new, there's a new form kind of agreement being gone through right now as far as what that will be.
Now, that triggered another thought in my head, because when we were touring with American Water, they said that if they flowed their water through our pipes, that there's a huge EPA process.
Right.
But on a temporary basis, that probably.
Right, yeah. I told, I absolutely, you know, talked to the EPA about it and let them know, and their concern is long-term.
Right.
It's long-term, it's erosion.
Yep.
Of their water. So, I'm under the impression that if they did take over, that they would have to cut chunks of, chunks of our mains throughout town, go let them sit in a lab for eight, nine months and see what happens to it before they could switch over.
One, one thing I have, just a, when they were looking at this filtration plan, it's really only for our wells, right? So, we're only gonna be pulling it up out of, out of the aquifer, out of the San Cody aquifer. It didn't envision us trying to get like surface water or anything else like that. And the reason I'm a little bit concerned is that with this Tiff district that was just negotiated down on one, or on 29, they're going to put in, with Peoria, they're gonna put in an industrial park down there. I think the school district was involved with that. So, with this new industrial buildout down there on 29, that, interestingly enough, is right above the San Cody aquifer. So, all of this industrial buildout that they're planning right in Peoria is gonna be sitting right on top of where we get our water out of. So, I'm concerned with, if we keep our, our system, our sole source of water could potentially be contaminated by Peoria's new industrial park. So, if we, if, if we had in our, if we're gonna get our new filtration system, maybe we should also consider surface water too, so that we could do exactly what Illinois American does just down the street.
If I'm not mistaken, I think the San Cody aquifer is quite.
Oh, it's huge.
Quite large, so I'm sure it's not the first, and that, not that this is.
There's other industrial.
Not that this makes me feel better, but there's a lot of industrial plants over the aquifer.
I forget, I don't know if you have a map, but the San Cody aquifer runs for.
... raised landfill.
Yeah, it's huge.
Yeah.
So, so, but this is just gonna be the closest to our wells, so like.
I believe that Illinois American pulls about half of the water supply from Illinois River and then half from the San Cody.
They couldn't give us a, they couldn't give us a number on that, Mike, when, but they do pull, it, it's, it is some and then some.
Yeah.
But, you know, I, I'm just concerned is like, literally where we have our straw, there is a, gonna be a industrial plant stuff right next to our straw. And so, maybe it gets washed around a little bit, but not the best place to put a straw.
Right. What Mike says, fit his point, I mean, there's, Peoria is an industrial area and there are industrial properties all over the San Cody. I believe the San Cody is the second largest aquifer in the continental United States, or close to it, it's part of the bigger in the country. And so, it crosses the river, it's on the east side of the river as well, it's a big aquifer.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, I think we ought to try and wrap it up. Anyone else want to make any final comments?
Did you have more, Beth?
No, it's hard to get a word in.
I know, she's been trying.
I got one last comment there.
I think we need.
And it was something that trustee Wiggman said, and I just wanna make sure that, when you spoke about the water company bankrupting the village, I just wanna.
I can't hear you, Brian.
Reiterate, I know, I gotta lay over this thing to the mic, that, you know, American Water wouldn't let the water service bankrupt American Water, they would raise the rates to whatever the cost of providing the water service would be. And again, I think if we do it and we keep it, that those water rates have got to meet the needs of the water company.
Yeah.
So bankruptcy isn't an option. Whatever it costs to operate the water company is what the rates are gonna be.
Well, that's philosophical, and I don't totally disagree with that, but I just make a, I would make a point that we don't expect police or fire or administration to stand on their own, we fund them. So, I don't think it's totally out of the ordinary to, if the village itself, through its budget, had to help out the water company. I don't, I, I don't have trouble with that.
Yeah. The only difference is, is the water is a service that I consume.
Well, but fire and police are services as well, and so is public works.
Right. Good point.
So, I'm just, and I, you and I, you know, philosophically would agree on that, I think it, you know, it resonates well with people, oh, this, this part of the business should pay for itself, but again, it's, it's a service, it's an important service, and I don't think we should entirely take it off the table that if you're going to invest in some of these capital needs, that Tiff districts or business development districts within those areas where the water mains and service lines are present, that it couldn't be helped out by some of those other funds.
Fair point.
Someone on, someone to my left.
I was just thinking that we need to, I mean, I've had a lot of thoughts and I'm sorry, I've, like you, trustee Weisenberg, I lose them as the conversation continues. It's a little bit difficult, but I don't know if my fellow trustees want to have a conversation specifically about which direction we're gonna go here or even make that decision. I know trustee, trustee, sorry, you've said that you have made up your decision, your mind.
Yes.
I have been on and off the fence like trustee Weisenberg, and I still find myself in that position, because I feel that we don't have the numbers of what it's going to take to provide this service internally, and I don't know when we will have that exactly.
I don't know that you can ever get that.
I don't know that we can ever get it either, so it's a question I would pose.
I mean, you can get estimates, but, but again, we don't know construction cost, these are over a 20-year period, I don't, we don't know what construction costs are gonna be in five years or 10 years, what it's gonna cost to employ people, and all these things. But I think estimates, as an engineer, they're, they're pretty in the ballpark.
Their estimates and things change, like the PFAS issue, you know, frankly, I, you know, it's, we've been spinning our wheels on this, you know, to staff end, and, and you know, it'd be great to have a decision, Water Inc., so we're not holding Water Inc. out there either.
Or our community.
And I interrupt you, I apologize, but that, that's what myself, Mr. Aldridge and Mr. Sutton are asking you, give us some direction, because we, again, we don't wanna embark on this ice picking if majority of you say, "Well, we should sell." So, I'm gonna go back to you trustee Kazan and let you.
No, it's okay. I think that we have, I know you, there's a sense of urgency certainly, and I think that we need to do a couple of things right away, and one of them is looking into how we can help our residents immediately.
Yes.
One of them is touring Morton's facility, which I had a conversation with their mayor the other day, I think, I hope I'm not misstating this, I believe it was $40 million or something like that, but I wanna, you know, check my facts on that and then get an answer to the mayor and others right away.
Yeah.
I also want to point out on the agenda next Tuesday is the next round of ice picking. So, if you're not ready, then we need to table it, as the mayor mentioned earlier, because the, the cost to cancel that is $40,000. So, if, if you're not ready next Tuesday, we'll table it, but it is, it is on the agenda for approval.
How much time do we have to make that decision to let them know?
It depends on when we want it done. I was told by superintendent Chandler to rather do it in the summer rather than the fall for many reasons, so that's why I'd rather get on, because it's the only company that does it, so the sooner we get on their schedule, the better.
But do we have 30 days to make this decision or?
I'm a, I'm actually meeting, having a online meeting with him tomorrow about planning out what routes we would be doing. So, I, I have just, you know, expressed to him that I've, you know, gotten it to the administration and it's gonna be going to the board for approval. So, they obviously aren't gonna block out a spot for us until they get the deposit, you know, basically.
Well, I'm all for it, let's go with it, of course, I don't wanna sell, so let's invest in our, our, our water company, let's get it taken care of, we're gonna, you, you said there was been improvement.
I believe there has been.
Pardon?
I believe there has been, yes.
I say, let's go, let's do it, let's get it done.
I second that, and it doesn't, you know, whether we sell or not, because we have to address these issues now.
I, I totally agree with, with trustee Kazan and trustee Gett. Regardless, like we had talked about earlier, whether we sell or not, this is not dispositive. I, I think even if we do sell, they had told us that the brown water would still be there, so.
The ice picking's gonna have to happen one way or another.
It's, yeah, ice picking, if, if we wanna address the complaints that we get from our, our citizens to address the click, the, the color of the water, then I think ice picking has to happen regardless of whether we sell or not. I know what, Mr. Mayor, you had said, "We're not gonna recoup this cost if we sell," but even if we did, we need to address this water, the color of the water now. That's a good point. I agree.
Yeah, it's under our stewardship right now, so we need to go through with that.
Yeah. All right, I appreciate everyone giving your, part of your Saturday, I'd like to wrap it up, but if you'd like to do this again, I mean, pun intended, we can take a deep dive on a good part of a Saturday and have Mike and Wayne put some presentations together for us and the public. We don't have to decide this morning, but please let Dustin or I know if you would like to do that. Mike, I mean, I know you know lots of people out there who in other communities.
I can set all of that up on the bio app.
Well, grab the mic, Wayne, please.
Definitely.
In the coming week, I will overwhelm you with more information than you probably want, including news stories detailing the experiences from across the country, what the statewide situation is, what the national situation is, and I'm gonna throw you a lot of homework, so you do with it what you want, but, but I'll get that to you so you have it, and that will help inform your decision, so.
Please put all that up on the website too.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Again, I thank you and thanks to staff too for being here this morning, so trustee Gett had asked for a motion adjourned.
I made your motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? All right, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, thank you all, adjourn.